Good evening, this is City Council, City Work Meeting. Today is February 22nd, 2023, the time is 6:30 PM. This meeting has been due to the advertised in the city newspaper and performs from the open club. Meeting that other than the sunshine law. Roll call?
Davenport?
Present.
Camelaro?
Here.
Thomas?
Present.
Camona?
Present.
Korea?
Present.
Barclay?
Present.
Sis trump? All of the candidates.
I'm saying motion to approve the previous minutes. Motion, say. All favor.
At first and again is ordinance number one, second reading, public hearing will be held during regular session. Amendment, Chapter 48, Police Department Title Hiring and Promotions, Section 48-14A, exemption from civil service examination.
Okay, any questions? Say no.
Resolution 49, authorizing the city to join with the state of New Jersey and other local government units as a participant in the formal agreements implementing a unified plan for the proposed allocation and use of opioid litigation settlement process and to accept the same where distributed.
Any questions? Say no, next.
Resolution 50, authorizing the city to enter into a local, inter-local service agreement with the Atlantic County Department of Public Works to perform an aerial application of pesticide for mosquito control.
Any questions? Say no, next.
Resolution 51, approving the second joint agreement allowing the city of A Harbor City to withdraw as a participant, including New Jersey American Water Company Incorporated as a new participant.
Any questions? Say no.
Resolution 52, approving the city to participate in the lead challenge grant.
Any questions? Say no, next.
Next is reveal the bill list.
Evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. First we'll look at the bill that we've made between this Castlevania and this Castlevania. And you'll see at the very top, except for the very first one, the next five bills were for demolition of that building on the corner of First and Washington. That money will be reimbursed by, out of the demolition money from the state. In addition to that, obviously payroll for last, that's paid. We go to the bill we're looking to go through, this is the time, scan over to page two. There's number three, the monthly trash removal. And number four is the kind of gas and fuel duty. For the month, we're down like $400 in department. First they've gone up and down, but right now we're a little bit down. You go to page three, near the bottom, let's see things from Joel Fleishman, there's the writing pestero for spyglass and ideal redevelopment. We go over to page four, that we now power DMS, it's a software system that has been used for, I think mostly the fire department for communications, and also when they send out a directive, when they log on, automate the signs that they receive the directive. Three below that, you'll see Lafayette Utility. The last month, we approved an emergency invoice of $57,000 for Lafayette, the bill came in 41.5. So we were able to take almost $15,000 there. One way below that is body armor replacement. Hard to believe that body armor has expiration date much later than down the road. And then, if you go over to page six. Second one down is the February school payment, part of that taxes, part of that debt service. It's all part of the money that we charge individuals for their taxes, we just pay to debt service once a year.
That's why it's so high?
Yeah, that's why it's so high. It's like, our number bills, I think the debt service was like $650, the balance is less. You look down, third from the bottom, fourth from the bottom, New Jersey, over the door, you'll see one door's already been replaced at the fire department, during process of working on the second one right now. And then two down from that is our annual shot spotter costs for the service that we have from here. Other than that, all the other bills are normal operating, bills that try and run a city. Any questions?
There's question. This one, this rule here, for a 834, some aggressive services, what's that for, $20,000 to the community? Page number six.
Oh, the very bottom on page six, that is again part of lawsuits from employees that we have to pay, either we have a deductible that we have to pay, and this is part of the deductible. We have, I think, probably maybe three, two, three, or four pending lawsuits that have been going on for a little bit, and this is part of the deductible we pay for what they have to pay out.
This is for our board, between two of them, this is the deductible.
This is the very next one, Summit?
Yes.
Yeah, that is. Actually, I think there's like two of them.
The deductible is there.
Any more questions? Say no. Next is part of portion, able to move public, which is to speak and agenda items and agenda items. Come forward. So, may I say a motion to approve portion? Motion. Say, favor?
Aye.
All favor?
Aye.
Say, favor?
Aye.
Now, open for discussion to council. Council, before today. That's nothing on time. Four, seven.
Nothing at this time.
Council.
Nothing at this time.
Very happy. May I say a motion to approve portion?
Motion.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Good evening, again, this is City of Pleasantville, City Council, regular meeting. Today's date is February 22nd, 2023, the time is 6:38 PM. This meeting has been due to advertise in the city newspaper and performs from the open club. Meeting that, otherwise, no, that's the sunshine law. Would you please stand for the flags to move? Notification of flag. How far along?
I'm on my way. I'll give my name, I gave my gun, I will be gone on earth as it is now. Give us a stay, the day we're in, give us a rest, as soon as we can, just like, give us a rest. We need this land to be protected, but the terms of evil, that's the kingdom, the power of the law and forever. Let your leaders, to the side of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice alone.
Roll call?
Davenport?
Present.
Camelaro?
Here.
Thomas?
Present.
Camona?
Present.
Korea?
Present.
Barclay?
Present.
Sis trump?
Present.
Motion to discuss with the reading in previous minutes?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Yes, he did. Deirdre, would you have to come up?
Any question?
This has happened to, it's a good one. Okay. And county too, so everybody can see. Oops. Where do you want us?
That's good, right there.
We good?
Mm-hmm.
Careful, careful. This we received from the home security, homeland security from FEMA for our flood plan, excuse me, our national flood insurance program. And this is a community rating system. It was a surprise when it came to the office because we've been participating in it, but we didn't know we were getting this. And what this does is show that we've been doing things to try to lower the risk of floods in the area. And Deirdre has been handling it. So Deirdre, would you like to say a few things about it?
Yes, well, glad that we got it. It basically, the information for the CRS system provides property owners with insurance. It encourages them to flood, it encouraged flood loss production and helps them save money. We are a six, which gives our residents a 20% discount on their insurance.
That's good, that's while reading here, okay. So it reads as follows. FEMA, City of Pleasantville successfully participates, I'm a glass going, successfully participates in the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System. The community has undertaken a series of meaningful activities to protect us as citizens from losses caused by flooding and has significantly exceeded the requirements for NFIP participants and effective flood plan management.
Okay. And we are also, actually, this is our year for a visit, so we will be having a physical visit from FEMA to come out and see exactly what we send in to submit, so I'm working on that now. Our verification is in March.
Okay.
The public should care. So, I want to make up a small moment of this moment, because to have this rating, I think is significant in this community. The low, your goal every year is to have
The lowest rating.
The lowest, correct.
The lowest rating, right? So we initially, I think, when we went into the program, we ran like a nine or a 10. Deirdre, as your community rating system coordinator, has been successfully each year doing the outreach initiatives throughout the community, which helps us get that rating lowered each year, which, as you heard her state, helps anybody in the flood prone areas have a decrease in their homeowners insurance. And these initiatives are not simple initiatives, Deirdre, so I just want you to just speak a little bit, and this is more, this is for council as well, but the public, you know, we need them to know, you know, that the initiatives that you're doing, why we're doing it, and how it can benefit them.
Right, so what we do is each year, we send out a series of letters, we send it out to the property owners, we send it to banks, insurance agencies, so that they can make the community aware of flood insurance. And the purpose of the flood insurance is to make sure that you're protected. So, a lot of people say, well, I'm not in the flood zone area, but water doesn't have a respective person. So just because you're not in that area don't mean you won't tell. So we give, we send the information to everybody because, like I said, water doesn't have a respective person or property. So if you are in the area or close to an area, you may not think that you need insurance, but it's good to have the coverage. And the reason why you should look into it, because you have to be insured at least 30 days. If we get a flood and you're not insured, at least 30 days, you won't be covered. So they have a baseline, so that's why we share the information, to let people know the importance of the insurance, and we provide information of where to go to, we also have webinars and different information if you're not sure, if you have questions about it. And, so the process is kind of empty, and also, I work with Kevin Kane a lot because he is our code official, so with that, he's the CFM, so as far as the mitigation for the areas, you know, we work hand in hand with that information to provide to the people. We also, last year, if you guys remember, we put in for the grant for the forerunner, so we, the Pleasantville did accept it, and we are now working on the information. I believe the site is up and available, which will give our residents another avenue to go look at where the elevation certificates are and where they sit at on the map. You plug it in and put your address in, and it'll pull you up on the map.
And what's key about that is, the city and other cities too, has probably had this information sitting in storage, file cabinets, and, you know, a potential homeowner or property owner or investor will come in and data this information, and it takes some time for us to look up that information. So this
Forerunner?
Forerunner?
Yes.
Improves efficiency, so now you can do this right from your phone, right from your home, you don't have to, you know, you're not taking time away from the staff in the office. Now, I know that you're working very closely with Kevin Kane, who's our construction official, who does an excellent job, but Deirdre, I want you to, you know, you know, I just want you to be recognized tonight by council because you keep saying "we," but it's you that has been doing all of this work and has afforded this community opportunity to have a discount on their insurance, and she continues to make sure that we are approved each and every year.
Question, Deirdre, a question. If the residents in the area, the more, does that have anything to do with lowering our rates, the more that gets insured, because I know a lot of them are refusing to get the flood insurance?
Well, no, the, our rating, the discount goes by our score.
By what we're doing.
What we're doing.
Has nothing to do with the residents, whether they
Whether they participate or not. Right, so difference in the, the difference in the discount, we will, we probably can get a number or two lower. Our area has flooded, but some areas have more potential for different damages, so they get different activities that they get to bring their score lower. So, you know, we still can implement some other things, so I'm working on a couple things to see if we can get our score, you know, the better discount we can get our residents, this will be the better. But at this point, whoever's in it, they get the same discount.
Yeah, doesn't matter how many people.
Great job.
For you, I think you're doing a good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Question right here. Is, except for the old high school area, which I know that's where it floods at the most?
Yes.
What other areas are mainly impacted by this?
Well, pretty much for our zone, our NFIP insurance zone is in that Bay Area.
Okay.
And that's why I stated, even that you're not located in that area, water will go anywhere, so you can say, people say, oh, I'm not in that zone, so I really don't need the insurance, but we never know, like, we try to keep our drains unclogged, but if there's enough flow going, even if it's not clogged, if it's not draining properly because of the, because of the, how do I want to say it, because of the significance of the rainfall, it's still going to flood in certain areas, which everybody's prone to damage, so that's why it's important to have insurance.
Do you have a roundabout ballpark figure of how much flood insurance does cost on a
I don't have a number for that, because every property is different. So depending on what they have in their house, or if they have elevated their house, it depends on their status of their home with the insurance.
So like a couple hundred dollars more, a thousand dollars more?
If you aren't in
In the flood zone?
Now, that I'm not certain of, because now they do have, you have your private entity, but if your private entity is not covered under FEMA, so you can have one or the other. So, let's say we get a flood, and your insurance company decides, you know what, we're not covering that. You've been paying insurance, and you were the private insurer. FEMA covers the insurers because you are under their umbrella, under the NFIP, so I will check for you, I
I'm just curious, just
Yes, I don't know about the rates, but I will check.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Deirdre, I want to say keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Ms. Peyton, it's possible, can we get some information on forerunner?
Certainly.
Do you have information on, is that your line?
I do, we both have it, they actually just sent us a new link where they showed the map, because they changed something to show us how to implement it. I will reach out to the guy tomorrow and see if we can't share the, you know, the link that they have, you know, that they're working on.
Because we should be able to put it on our website when it's ready.
Right, yes.
Right, so that's the information that you guys are looking for, that should let the constituents are able to go right to the website, get the link, get all the information that they're looking for. So I'll get back to you guys.
And that's what they're working on, they're just trying to put our information in so that when our residents go on there, they don't have blank spots.
Oh, so they
So they give it a floating information that we provide.
That's successful, you've been doing a lot of door, door, door to doors?
No, actually, we don't have to. No, but that is one of the options that we have on the board, to do door hangers before we get a flood, so that people can be informed, like when they, it's always flood season, I can't say a certain season, because whenever it rains, it's a possibility, but once the weather break, I have a team that we was going to do door knockers, and just provide it for everybody, and see if we get feedback.
More questions? Thank you, I think she took it back.
I'm excited for that, I'm excited when I got back. Am I good?
Thank you.
Here's one thing, before you move on, for those who may not know, Deirdre is also the city's emergency management coordinator, so she has been getting her feet wet on this topic. Doing a great job.
And she's also the major wellness campaigner.
Naked.
And she's a little bit very gay.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Sorry. My song.
Agenda items.
Oh, next is agenda items. Yep, next is agenda items.
First is number one, second meeting, public hearing required. Amendment, Chapter 48, Police Department Title Hiring and Promotions, Section 48-14A, exemption from civil service examination.
Any questions? So now it's open for the public, anyone from the public wants to speak on this agenda item, and this agenda item only. See no one? Motion to approve?
Motion.
All favor? Say a motion? Motion, no, they say a motion.
That's very motion. Second.
Who first?
Mr. Davenport.
Okay, I didn't hear that, thank you.
Okay, roll call, Davenport?
Yes.
Camelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Sis trump?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Resolution 49, authorizing the city to join with the state of New Jersey and other local government units as a participant in the formal agreements implementing a unified plan for the proposed allocation of use of opioid litigation settlement process and to accept the same where distributed.
Motion.
Second. Roll call, Davenport?
Yes.
Camelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Sis trump?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 30, authorizing the city to enter into a inter I'm sorry, 50, thank you. Authorizing the city to enter to a inter-local service agreement with Atlantic County Department of Public Works to perform an aerial application of pesticide for mosquito control?
Motion.
Thank you.
Roll call, Davenport?
Yes.
Camelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Sis trump?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 51, approving the second joint agreement allowing the city of A Harbor City to withdraw as a participant, including New Jersey American Water Company Incorporated as a new participant.
Motion.
Second. Just a question, Ms. Scotty, you said it was language that had to be adjusted on this one, to the press report?
No, not on that one, I think that you're referring to
Oh, legally, legally.
Okay, roll call, Davenport?
Yes.
Camelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Sis trump?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 52, approving the city to participate in the lead challenge grant.
Motion? Second. And third question.
I modified the template resolution to include, develop, study, in fact, it says here in the last where it's provision, through the share in the fire and as emergency dispatch services rather, now therefore being resolved to this program to study, develop, and determine the feasibility of the foregoing shared services initiative.
Roll call, Davenport?
Yes.
Camelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Sis trump?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Next, I mean, a motion to approve the bill list?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport?
Yes.
Camelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Sis trump?
Yes.
Motion approved. Any motion to approve the FEMA license?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport?
Yes.
Camelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Sis trump?
Yes.
Motion approved. Next is public portion.
Next is public portion, anyone from the public wants to speak?
Have anyone signed the list?
There's no one.
Yeah, there is, yeah.
Anyone else like to sign, I mean, the public?
Can I start? Good evening, City Council. I'm sorry, it's been a long day, I know for all of us, including me. Is there any way that I could get an explanation of Resolution 51? I'm just not understanding the language beneath the resolution.
I'm going to move to our solicitor, that's back.
Is that 51? Yeah, Resolution 51.
This is essentially an agreement that originated in 1973, was amended in 1990, and is being amended at this particular juncture only because A Harbor City is being purchased by American Water Company. So this is an ongoing relationship that the city of Pleasantville, as well as the life city of Galway, have seeking Lindwood, Longport, A Harbor City, and various other municipalities within the county of Atlantic have with the Atlantic County Utilities Authority to transmit their waste, sewage waste. That's basically what it is. And so this resolution is only all of the participants of that project, all municipalities, have to sign on through their governing body, resolving that they're okay with American Water substituting it for A Harbor City. There's no other changes other than that.
Perfect, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, good evening.
Thank you. One else from public, say it over this, and it's a, a public portion, motion? Second. All favor?
Aye.
It's having, now we have open discussion. Mayor, Council, Mayor.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for coming out. I'd like to say thank you to Deirdre for the job, and everyone have a good evening.
Okay.
Mayor, if you want to mention John Brooks, the mobile bank?
Oh, okay, yes, yesterday, we went to Maze Landing, to John Brooks Center, John Brooks Covered Center. They were debuting, they had a ribbon cutting for their van that they're going to have. We mentioned not too long ago about the van that they're going to have riding around town, and it's a brand new van, it's really, it looked like a medical facility once you walked in it, and they're still retrofitting it, and it won't be ready for two weeks, but it really was just a very, very nice van that's going to be riding around town, hopefully we'll be able to alleviate some of the problems that we're having on Main Street and throughout the city. That's what the hope is, and
And the director over there, Michael, what's his last name? Michael Santella, was just so enthusiastic about coming to Pleasantville and realizing the problem that we have. And the way that most of our attitudes are about John Brooks van here in the first place. And he's very cooperative with us. So I'm just really looking forward to the van being able to make a difference also.
Chair.
Yes.
Mayor, will they have mental health services on the van as well?
Yes, definitely. Yes, other than just the recup? Yes.
Mr. Minister?
Oh, excuse me. But I just wanted to say, Lynn, is there anything you wanted to add? Because you're on the board also. There's a lot that you discussed that we don't discuss. I mean, that, you know, he wouldn't discuss with us in meetings.
I think for the most part, the mayor has said the purpose of the van. I think what is good for the public to hear today is that we do realize within the city that we have certain issues, and those issues are on our main street where our local businesses are trying to operate. So the goal of partnering with the John Brooks Recovery Center, who is now owned and operated by Atlanta Care. So we believe that that merger will bring a higher quality of care and a different presence within the community for people to receive the program in a better and a positive manner. So to Councilwoman Thomas's question, it's going to be a holistic approach. They named at the ribbon cutting, the team of people that will be on the van at all times. It will be a clinician, you know, some form of a medical doctor, medical, mental health person, and someone, and an additional vehicle will be there to transport these people on the spot to the services they need. And it may not necessarily be the substance abuse or things of that nature. It could be homelessness or employment issues or things of that nature. So they're going to have, they've already communicated with our police department. The police department has identified what they consider hotspots. So they want to start in those areas, put the van. The van's going to be parked, but the folks working within the van are going to be on the street. They are actually going to walk the street and see if they can help, you know, get these people some help, which in turn will help clean up our main street. And then the real goal is to, you know, get these people to be productive citizens back into the society. So, yeah, we're trying to turn something that could potentially look at as a negative into a positive. And as the mayor mentioned, the CEO there said that he'll continuously work with the city to see what our needs are. So I know that one of the hotspots, and as you all may know, is the bus station. So we'll start at the bus station and we'll go, and I think they've identified some other spots. But they'll start there. But if there's areas of concerns that you all know about, and I know some of you walk the street, let us know. And they're going to be very, very flexible with the program. And they're working along with the police department and also Deidre Brown, who, what we're, she's doing outreach throughout our, from out of our HR office. And it's not needle exchange. I just want to, and I don't know, there's pros and cons to that, and everyone has their opinion about needle exchange. But they made it clear that that's not what this is, and they're not dispensing medication out of it either.
And I did want to say that yesterday, one of the people that they had there doing a testimony, I'll say, was a fellow that was clean for like 30 years. And he was a pro basketball player in the pros and then overseas and everything. And he was married, no, he was married for 30 years. And then he just had a story to tell. And it just warmed your heart. And he was there, and that's who they said, that's what they said they want to do. Not only get them off the street, but make them productive citizens again. You know, just so that they could just be, you know, in society and live the life that they want to live. And he had been married, you may see his story in the paper. I don't know if it's that they did a big interview on him. And he had been married for like 30 years and his wife, and he stayed together all that time. And he hasn't had anything to drink or anything in so long. And, you know, that's the kind of people that Mike said he was trying to just attract.
But that's the peer-to-peer, like peer recovery. They use people that have the real-life experience. They train them, certify them, and they're part of the team to go out on the streets, try to reach these people.
And our chairman of our street walking committee would be one councilman. Did I say that right?
Yes.
I had to learn you too, sorry.
Chair has a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Will there be some type of schedule provided for these services? Or when the mobile vans come in, you know, to the hotspots?
Yeah, I think they're working on a schedule. We have a tentative schedule in place, but the van is being utilized with two other or three other municipalities. So I think right now we'll have three days, a week, depending on the need. But once the schedule's worked out with all of the municipalities and, you know, they have a definite schedule, we'll get that out to everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Korea.
Well, aside from, I thank you all for coming in. I want to quickly, Deidre, might I give you your?
Yes. Thank you.
Great job, job well done. But also, as a former insurance agent in property test, licensees as well. Please, anything I can do for our city, and feel free to, great job, please.
Thank you.
Okay? Great job. You're doing mighty fine on your own. Thank you, guys.
Councilman Berkeley.
I would like to thank everyone for coming out. Especially, I want to direct my attention to the way the public session was handled. Wasable. The exchange was very much polite, and I want to just applaud the public for that.
Councilman Kamona.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out. Deidre, congratulations. Thank you for doing a good job. Keep it up. And everybody have a blessed night. Stay safe.
Councilman Davenport.
I just want to say congratulations, Deidre. And everyone else have a good night.
Councilwoman Davenport.
Deidre, congratulations. And I think it was kind of a, it's known for to say, keep your feet wet. Get your feet wet. Let's not keep your feet wet. But good job. Good job.
I just have a public announcement that there will be a food distribution tomorrow on Milan Avenue, the Honda Bus Station. It's from 10:00 a.m. through 1:00 p.m. And it's usually before 1:00 p.m. It's like first come, first served. And it's through the Atlantic County Sheriff's Office. So if you can get there, get there. Please let your neighbors know. And they really have some great, you know, giveaways that they give out. Good night, everyone.
Yeah, we have a food distribution tomorrow. And Plaza de la Bus Station, Mayan Bus, Festival Bus Station. So please come out.
Maybe I'll need to speak up.
Yeah, nice cadence, whatever. He's Britten's.
That was a mistake. He was supposed to say the Spanish.
Okay. Now, good evening. Thanks for coming out. Your concerns are ours. And we'll just try to do our best. Watch the kids, keep the state moving, God bless the city of Pleasantville. They're taking a motion.
Motion.
On favor? Aye.